We need a bigger courtroom.
Good morning or good afternoon to everybody. Use your eyes for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Here.
Mr. Franco.
I'm here.
Mr. Cabrera.
I am here. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, the notice requirements have been satisfied as to the time, place, and date of holding said meeting by posting notice on the bulletin board here at Borough Hall and by mailing and emailing saying to the heroine of Cape May County, on October 15th, 2024. In the event of an emergency, we've got all the help you can ever imagine right here in this light. Emergency exit is our front left, or your back right, or the door just by the American flag. A couple quick announcements here today. This meeting is being streamed live on the Borough's Facebook page and also on the Borough's YouTube channel. In the event you're watching the recording, the meeting live, and you want to make a public comment, there's an access code you're going to dial into, which is this conference line right here on the dials. That number to call in is 888-363-4734. And when prompted, you're entered the access code 969-9020, followed by the town or the hashtag. In the event you watch the recorded version of this meeting and you have a question or a comment, you're more than welcome to email our clerk at clerk@wildwoodcrest.org, or you may phone her at 609-729-8040. When we get to the public comment section of the meeting, you have five minutes to make your comment. We do not need your address. We only need your name. So we're going to kick off this meeting with a very special presentation for Louis J. Belasco III. I have a proclamation here that I'm going to leave. My understanding is he was accepted and is heading to West Point. And that's a major congratulations from, and very well represented by Wildwood Crest here today. So we're going to come down. I'll read this into the record, and we'll present it to Mr. Belasco, and then we'll open up the floor if he wants to make any comments. And I told him he's got five minutes, five minutes left before his next one. All right. Are we ready? All right, let's do it. All right. Wildwood Crest Proclamation. Whereas Louis J. Belasco III is a sixth generation to call the Wildwoods home, and is a member of the Wildwood Catholic Academy Class of 2025. Whereas Louis J. Belasco III has demonstrated all-around leadership and held the title of captain of the Wildwood Catholic Cross Country Swim and Track and Field Teams and serves as a Eucharistic minister at Notre Dame de la Merre Parish. And whereas Louis J. Belasco III has volunteered with the Wildwood Crest Volunteer Fire Company Number One and will soon graduate from the Cape May County Fire Academy. And whereas a lifelong dream has come to fruition as Louis J. Belasco III recently received certificate of appointment to United States Military Academy at West Point. And whereas those admitted to United States Military Academy at West Point are expected to have stellar academics, strong leadership skills, and be in peak physical condition, and with such rigorous standards, the acceptance rate is 11%. And whereas it is desire of this Board of Commissioners of the Borough of Wildwood Crest to acknowledge and laud this outstanding achievement by Louis J. Belasco III, and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Borough of Wildwood Crest, County of Cape May, and State of New Jersey that sincere appreciation and commendation be extended to Louis J. Belasco III for his successful appointment to United States Military Academy at West Point Class of 2029. Now therefore, I, Don Cabrera, by the power vested in me as mayor of the Borough of Wildwood Crest, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 30th, 2025, as Louis J. Belasco III dead in the Borough of Wildwood Crest, and we extend our sincerest congratulations on a job well done.
Louis wants to say a couple of words.
I just wanted to thank the fire department and the Beach Patrol of Wildwood Crest as it has helped me along my journey to get to the Military Academy, and my family for helping me along the way too. Thank you.
The chief has asked me to announce that after this, I guess right now, we're going to go over the volunteer fire department. He has cake and some refreshments, and you're all invited. But before I forget, I would just like to congratulate Ron McGowan to his new position, and thank you for your 18 and a half years, I think it was, in our fire inspection department. Doesn't mean you're leaving the fire department. You're just leaving that one area. But thank you.
Does the family want pics?
You guys want to take a picture? We can do them, but they're too expensive for you.
The whole Belasco family. Do you need us to keep moving back?
No, 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 no. I'm kidding. Saying because we're so many.
I'm trying to move it for you.
Okay, everybody, say cheese, please. There you go. And congratulations, Louis.
You're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. I know this is a highlight of your evening. If not, you're more than welcome to go. Congratulations, Joe Min.
You don't want to be brave.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Did you like it?
There's a lot of plaster.
One of the best. One that came up and hugged them. He works in the county. Works in the county.
Does cough? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Can you tell?
Probably.
Take care. You're welcome.
All right. Can we have some of that door be shut?
Yeah.
You can, but it won't stay.
Mr. Shear.
I think it has to timeout, Don, to be honest with you.
Yeah, it needs like, it closes in like a minute, like, because you have to give
Are we good?
Okay. I'm partly. Have the ordinances, please.
Yes, the first is ordinance 1453 regarding fire prevention fees.
Motion that ordinance number 1453 be placed on second reading and final passage by title only.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance number 1453 be placed on second and final reading by title only.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Ordinance 1453 reads as follows. An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 35, Fire Prevention, Article 3, Administration, Section 35-18, additional required inspection and benefit, and fees, sorry.
Motion that a public hearing now be held on ordinance number 1453.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that a public hearing on ordinance number 1453 now be held.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Thank you.
Floor is open for public comment on ordinance number 1453. We'll start with anybody here in the audience this evening. Public comment on ordinance number 1453. Hearing none. We'll go to the conference line. Any public comment on ordinance number 1453? Hearing none?
Motion that a public hearing on ordinance number 1453 now be closed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the public hearing on ordinance number 1453 now be closed.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Motion that ordinance number 1453 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance number 1453 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance 1454 regarding rental properties.
Motion that ordinance number 1454 be placed on second reading and final passage by title only.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance number 1454 be placed on second and final reading by title only.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Ordinance 1454 reads as follows. An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 56A, Rental Properties, Amending Section 56A-12.1 Occupancy Limitations for Rental Units.
Motion that a public hearing now be held on ordinance number 1454.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the public hearing on ordinance number 1454 now be held.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes. For those for public comment on ordinance number 1454, come on up to them. Just use your name.
I am the person who lives next to the frat house, and I just want to say two things. Thank you. I have my gratitude. I did not expect to be listened to about the menace in my next door neighbor's house. Second question, however, is how is this, well, I've read it thoroughly, understand it completely. How will it be enforced?
So the ordinance speaks to, there's various departments in the borough that can enforce it. So it's, we're hoping to catch it so it doesn't have to be enforced, so that there's a new procedure in terms of applying for the mercantile license. There's a square footage calculation that'll tell you how much of the maximum occupancy can be. There'll be a sticker issued to that particular person that is looking to rent their property out. However, if the borough gets a complaint or sees a concern, then the, one of the departments that are specified in the orders, I believe it's Code, Police, and maybe Fire, can go to, to go and investigate the situation.
Okay. And is this being implemented as of May 1st? I think that's the renewal date on the licenses, but those certificates have not been issued yet?
So the new, the ordinance, there is an ordinance already in place. This, this tonight just amends the existing where it tightens it up a little bit more. It creates the fire safety. There's a, there's a number of calculation. I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but we divide that into square footage. It actually tells you the number, the number of people you can have in here.
And is there not a clause in the new ordinance that the owner of the building will be receiving something that has to be displayed in terms of an occupancy limit so that the public can see it?
That's the sticker that I was referring to.
Wait, is that going to be issued for May 1st, for the renewal date? Should, should people have that in their possession if they're beginning to rent the rental season?
If they, if they had that on the old orders, they should have it.
This new ordinance goes into effect May 28th. We have to follow, we have to follow.
Okay. So there's no violation, there's no violation yet at the frat house because it's May 28th. Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And if you need further clarification, Vicki, who handles mercantiles, she's happy to help. Yep.
Any more public comment on ordinance number 1454?
Donald Murphy, one month to read. These Airbnbs, can anybody just decide tomorrow they want their house to be an Airbnb? Because I'm looking at three houses on either side of me that have four bedrooms each that are going to be Airbnbs. And, you know, people to cut down on the cost are going to split that up possibly with a couple other colors, couples for a weekend or a week. Where in the hell will these cars come? I mean, I'm talking about at least 10 cars on the weekend. Fourth of July, parking is already horrendous. And when we, when we do have problems with these rental units, and who do we call?
So it's going to either be code enforcement, the police department, or the fire safety. Just depends on it. I would, I would say it's probably start with the code enforcement office, and then they can go investigate. Then they'll look at the nature of it, and if there's other departments that need to be involved, I'll try to follow.
Code enforcement is Monday through Friday, 9 to 4.
Police department's 24/7.
24/7, right. So we first go to the police department.
You do what the mayor just said. Whatever fits the bill of the problem, you can reach out, and if nobody's in that office at that time, just call the police, and the police will direct you to the right place.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Call 911, call 911. Lisa Rippeau. Would you call 911? Would that be a 911 call if it's after hours? This gentleman just asked if he had a problem?
Ms. Rippeau, before you even start, I'm going to advise you of a couple of things.
Okay.
Okay. Firstly, I'm going to direct these commissioners not to answer any of your questions pertaining to an open request or any documents for which you filed a complaint, as you know, against this borough. You are now a litigant. We will see you in court. Okay? That's regard to that issue. The second issue is, you are a defendant. You are charged criminally. Everyone in this room, you might have some people there that are witnesses in this matter. I would advise you, I'm not your legal counsel. I know that you've chosen to represent yourself. You may want to actually go get an actual criminal defense attorney.
Why are you speaking to me when I'm asking about?
So when you speak, you can go ahead.
Mr. Elzunis, why are you talking to me about something I'm talking about? I asked you a question about a resolution here. I asked about 911. This gentleman went up and asked what he should do. He specifically said administrative offices. What is your problem, Mr. Elzunis?
Again, we're not answering any of your questions, Ms. Rippeau. Thank you.
About what this gentleman just asked. Is that a problem?
We're not answering any of your questions, Ms. Rippeau.
Okay, well, I have five minutes to speak on a token mic. Thank you.
Anybody else? Start, finish up anybody here in the audience. Okay, now we'll move to the conference line. Anybody on the conference line have any public comments on ordinance number 1454? Hearing none?
Motion that a public hearing on ordinance number 1454 now be closed.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that the public hearing on ordinance number 1454 now be closed.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Motion that ordinance number 1454 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance number 1454 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Okay, next we have ordinance 1455 regarding the beach.
Motion that ordinance number 1455 be placed on second reading and final passage by title only.
Second that motion?
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance number 1455 be placed on second and final reading by title only.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Ordinance 1455 reads as follows. An ordinance of the Borough of Wildwood Crest, amending and supplementing Chapter 8, Beach and Dunes of the Code of the Borough of Wildwood Crest, to provide for a method of identifying vehicles that are authorized to operate on the beach.
Motion that a public hearing now be held on ordinance number 1455.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded that a public hearing on ordinance number 1455 now be held.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes. Floor is open for public comment on ordinance number 1455. Or anybody here in the audience? Yes, sir.
Question. This doesn't apply to the standing fishing permit. Donald Murphy.
Thank you.
Now, I can answer that question for you. That's, the fishing permit chief ends, starts in October and ends.
April 30th.
Tomorrow morning.
Yeah. So you're not allowed to drive on the beach anywhere until next time you get a problem.
Like next?
October.
October.
Correct.
We're not going to throw you off the beach this time.
Anybody else? Public comment? Ordinance number 1455. We'll go to the conference line. Ordinance number 1455. Any public comments? Hearing none?
Motion that a public hearing on ordinance number 1455 now be closed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the public hearing on ordinance number 1455 now be closed.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Motion that ordinance number 1455 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance number 1455 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Okay, next we have ordinance 1456 regarding parks.
Motion that ordinance number 1456 be placed on second reading and final passage by title only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance number 1456 be placed on second and final reading by title only.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Ordinance 1456 reads as follows. An ordinance of the Borough of Wildwood Crest, amending and supplementing Chapter 47A, Parks of the Code of the Borough of Wildwood Crest, to provide for further rules and regulations at basketball courts and pickleball and tennis courts.
Motion that a public hearing now be held on ordinance number 1456.
Second that motion?
It's been moved and seconded that a public hearing on ordinance number 1456 now be held.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes. Floor is open for public comment on ordinance number 1456, better known as the play nice at the pickleball courts ordinance. Anybody in the audience? Go to the conference line. Ordinance number 1456, public comment. Hearing none?
Motion that a public hearing on ordinance number 1456 now be closed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that a public hearing on ordinance number 1456 now be closed.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Motion that ordinance number 1456 be passed on second, second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second that one?
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance number 1456 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Trish. We have resolutions.
You're welcome. Oh, dear. Okay, we have a lot. The first is accepting work performed and authorizing release of performance bond and accepting maintenance bond for the Beach Patrol Headquarters renovations contract.
Motion. I will second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is accepting work performed and authorizing release of performance bond and accepting maintenance bond for the fiscal year 2023 NJ DOT Municipal Aid Reconstruction of Orchid Road Contract.
I'll motion it.
I will second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing Borough Engineer Work Order for fiscal year 2025 NJ DOT Local Transportation Project Fund Grant Application at the not-to-exceed sum of $2,000.
I'll motion it.
I will second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Question on the motion. Mark, just to confirm, this is Denver, this is the Denver Beach to Bay application?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Okay. Next is authorizing amendment to the 2025 municipal budget to account for additional funding from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for the Recycling Tonnage Grant.
Motion it.
I will second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing increase of contract in the amount of $2,000 to William J. Hoffman for Planning Board Special Conflict Solicitor.
I'll motion it.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
I'm staying.
And Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing the mayor to sign the certification of the updated emergency operations plan for the Borough of Wildwood Crest.
I'll motion it. I will second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing increase of contract in the amount of $110,000 to Mark Heinzelman and the law firm of Lowenstein Sandler for specialized legal services.
I'll motion it. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing award of professional services contract to Concord Engineering for construction management and professional engineering services for Joseph Von Savage Pool at the not-to-exceed sum of $7,750.
Motion. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing Borough Engineer Work Order for the emergency contract for the Back Beach Fill Project at the not-to-exceed sum of $15,000.
I'll motion it. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing emergency contract with asphalt paving systems for Back Beach Fill Project at the not-to-exceed sum of $149,537.50.
I'll motion it. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing a licensing agreement between the Borough of Wildwood Crest and the Wild Harbor Tri Club for use of the kayak launch for open water swim season 2025.
Motion. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is designating May 4th through 10th, 2025, as the 56th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week in the Borough of Wildwood Crest.
Are we going to be advised when that comes up, please?
Yes, you will. You will know it.
I'll motion it then. I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing the preparation of estimated tax bills.
Motion. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is waiving special events application additional fees to the Greater Wildwood Yacht Club.
I'll motion it. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is affirming the Borough of Wildwood Crest's civil rights policy with respect to all officials, appointees, employees, prospective employees, volunteers, independent contractors, and members of the public that come into contact with municipal employees, officials, and volunteers.
I'll motion it. I will second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing Borough Engineer Work Order for the emergency contract for East Stockton Road Project at the not-to-exceed sum of $3,000.
Motion it. I will second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes. Yes.
Next is authorizing emergency contract with asphalt paving systems for East Stockton Road at the not-to-exceed sum of $9,375.
I'll motion it. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing award of contract for 2025 Road Resurfacing Program.
Motion. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is opposing New Jersey Protecting Against Climate Threats, Resilient Environments, and Landscape Rules, NJ Pact.
Motion it. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing re-advertising of notice to bidders for landscaping services for Higbee and Maury Fields.
I'll motion it. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Lastly is authorizing advertisement of a notice to bidders for plumbing and electric service at Nesbit Center.
I'll motion it. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Motion that all bills properly authorized as submitted be paid. I will second it.
It has been moved and seconded that all bills properly authorized as submitted be paid. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Okay.
Brings us to our public safety reports. We'll start with Chief Boyd.
Good evening. I'm going to touch on a couple highlights from my March report to the Director of Public Safety. So in the month of March, the police department responded to 1,442 calls for service, 646 of those required multiple officers. We conducted 47 investigations, responded to 237 service calls which include alarm, citizen assists, fires, medical assists, school-related activities, and utility complaints. Conducted 193 motor vehicle stops with 32 traffic summonses issued, responded to one motor vehicle accident, conducted 376 property checks, 575 hours of training, and we had 11 adult arrests and one DWA.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions? Any questions over Chief? Okay. Moving on, we're going to go to Mr. Krips. EMS and OEM.
Thank you, Mayor. We're in bottom of the industry. Is there's residents? Yeah, we did 57 calls for service for our time. Nine of those were mutually to Wildwood, two to Lower, and he's received one from Wildwood. Highlight the OEM is I want to thank the governing body and the rest of the staff to help against this emergency operations plan completed and tightened up for the year, it's not over two years. And our goal is to help protect all of you and prepare for anything that could come our way, and everybody involved was a huge success. So I hope that once we get the signatures, they will get sent over to the county, and the county will send it out to the state office of emergency magic. We're ready to go. We get ready for 2027. Thanks, Mayor.
I know there's a lot of work put together. Appreciate that.
Very good team effort this one. So it's good. Good job.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay.
Motion that all reports received from the court administrator, chief financial officer, tax collector, chief of police, supervisor for the recreation department, construction officials, fire prevention, emergency service coordinator for the EMS, and the Wildwood Crest Volunteer Fire Company Chief for the month ending March 31st, 2025 be accepted as presented. I'll second it.
It has been moved and seconded that all reports received from the court administrator, chief financial officer, tax collector, chief of police, supervisor for the recreation department, construction official, fire prevention, emergency services coordinator for the EMS, and the Wildwood Crest Volunteer Fire Company Chief for the month ending March 31st, 2025 be accepted as presented. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Motion that all minutes from the commission's meeting dated March 26th and April 9th, 2025 be approved as presented. I'll second it.
It has been moved and seconded that all minutes from the commission meetings dated March 26th and April 9th, 2025 be approved as presented. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes. Okay, brings us to one report. Engineers' report. Mr. Blazio.
Thank you, Mayor. Under capital projects, the contractor for the Bayside Bulkhead Replacement Project on the Bayside has completed the bulkhead installation at Primrose, Myrtle, Lotus, Fern, Forget Me Not, Columbine, and Sweetfire Road. As there have been a lot of challenges when you're ripping out bulkheads connecting to private properties and other structures that are right away, it's been a challenge, but we've been keeping up with it and dealing with it as well. At this point, we are on target to have everything done with the exception of the bulkhead replacement at Palm and Wisteria before Memorial Day, as well as the valves. So if all goes well, the contractor will take a hiatus through the summer, come back in the fall, and he will work on replacing the bulkheads at Palm and Wisteria and then putting in the valves. So so far, so good, and it's been a challenge. Second project is the fiscal year 23 DCA ADA Municipal Building Bathroom Improvement Project. We are on the closeout phase, including punchless items and grout staining from the roofing roof will be addressed as well upstairs in the bathroom. Next project, reconstruction of Toledo Avenue is ongoing to various phases. Some blocks are base paved, waiting for surface course. Other areas are waiting for base paving, concrete work. But we are on target to have that road surface paved before the start of the season. Next item with your action tonight, you have authorized a contract for what's known as the 2025 Road Resurfacing Program. That is a quick hitter, resurfacing program of some roadways. I spoke to the contractor today. That's the same contractor doing the bulkhead work. The day that he has the paving going on on the Bayside, he'll be mobilizing to complete these roadways, which he said it would be done in two to three days in that South State. I have no doubt that they're probably going to knock that all out in two to three days, and we'll be have that completed for you before Memorial Day. Under grant applications, we recently submitted a proposal to take the borough to the Cabe May County Open Space Board for funding for the Crest Fishing Pier. That'll be in front of you for your consideration, and we have two other grant opportunities that we're going for tack. One is the NJ DOT Local Transportation Project Fund that you authorized today. And the second one, which just recently came out, is the typical annual municipal aid application for roads, bikes, and pedestrian safety at DOT. We sent your proposal on that today, so that'll be another project that you'll have to select. And that is our report.
Okay. Don't remind any questions over engineer.
Mark, I think the bulkheads look nice.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, they really turned out better than I thought. Good job.
Yeah, I want to thank the public, especially those that live along Park Boulevard and on the Bayfront. Had our share of wind here this winter, and the construction debris and so forth has been going every which way, so our little properties are getting dirty, and the streets are getting need to be cleaned and all that stuff, but.
It's a free time watching everyone.
But thank you.
I had to be, I had to be doing some work. What are you doing? You're not doing anything with street drains. You're doing bulkheads?
I turned it off. They were, it was red.
So the projects, the overall project is essentially 10 street ends that have the bulkheads replaced. Add bulkhead replacement and have it elevated to meet current borough code and ordinances. As part of that, what we evaluated was even though it's a small little piece of the street end, we tried to pick the street up as high as possible. Because of my opinion, that's the best way to mitigate flooding and keep you out of floodwaters. So if you picture this up along the bulkhead is where we can raise it the highest.
Oh, I see.
Because then we, the road comes to Park Boulevard, we have to tie into that. So if we had a multimillion dollar project and we could go around the corner and start raising Park Boulevard and start raising up towards New Jersey, we could pick it all up in one shot. But so we're doing the best that we can in that timeframe.
You do realize the water comes up from the street drains.
Correct.
Yeah. So that's not getting mitigated at all?
Well, some of it is because to the extent that we can, we're raising those inlet rates. Now, we would be able to do a lot better by the borough if we had a project on Park Boulevard, which we eventually will. So we've designed the street ends to come up as high as possible, and if and when there ever is a Park Boulevard project, we'll be able to rip everything out and bring those inlets up. If we could bring the inlets up even six inches, it would have a significant impact on tidal flooding.
Flooding is bad down there. It gets scary sometimes.
Mark, can I mention the valves in there? I think that might address.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point, too. So the borough is, so in addition to raising the roadways, the borough is putting in, in my opinion, more reliable valves to stop the tide from coming in. They're actually very expensive valves. They are, I think to buy them, they're like $50,000 a pop. But those valves will require the borough personnel to physically go there and close them. So that's kind of the downside of the valve, but the upside of the valve is once that valve is closed manually, there's nothing coming back. As opposed to what's called a passive valve, where if the neoprene wears and opens up in time, it becomes useless, or if it gets clogged with trash, it's ineffective. So that's a good point, Commissioner. I was remiss in saying that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions over engineer?
I got you. All right. Keep it coming. Dana McWilliams, I'm happy to see the engineers' report. Last couple of meetings I've been, you know, nothing to say, which I know is not the truth, or I miss something. I can't remember what you said. There's no Park Avenue paving as part of the project you're doing right now.
Well, there's a conceptual conversational piece about maybe doing a project in the future, but it's not like right on the books right this second.
And just a question about the fishing pier project. There's funding for, can you help me understand what that project is?
So, do you want me to take that one, Mayor?
Sure. Well, I think we're referring to the New Jersey Boardwell Preservation Trust Fund grant.
I think so. It was a grant money.
Well, yeah, so the Crest Fishing Pier, the borough has already received a $1 million, $87,000 grant from the NJ DCA to replace the fishing pier. Obviously, that's not going to cover the total cost. What we're attempting to do is to go to the Cabe May County Open Space Board and hopefully receive up to another $2.5 million grant. So if you take the $2.5 million, you add the one, we're at $3.5. I think the project's probably going to be a four to five million dollar project. We can get three fifths of the way there.
And the project envisions replacing it is extending it so we can actually fish off of it again?
Yeah, so the project, which was presented here in the past, over the last probably four and a half years now, is to totally demolish the pier, widen the pier, the decking from the bike path all the way out, and elongate it into the water. We're also talking about providing ADA access of the areas where you can fish along the railing, a shade gazebo, and a potential bathroom as well.
So we're extending the pier several hundred feet?
I think it's 550, if I remember. 500 or 550.
So we received a permit, and we have to renew that permit, that allowed us to go as far and wide as maximal possible. And then that'll be a conversation piece as we're value engineering the job with the borough to see do we need to go that wide and that long? And those will be conversation pieces that will take place.
And now is the time, are we going to talk about the business district project at all time?
We weren't, but we can certainly, we can.
Where are we with the county? When's the county going to do the work on New Jersey? And when do we start talking about what we want to do and how and when we're going to do it?
So the county plans to start 2026 in the spring. The borough has its infrastructure work to do, so it has to replace the water lines, has to replace the sanitary sewer system. That's going to happen after the summer. That's what I slated for. Then the county will come in and do their roadway diet. It's at that particular time that the vision of the six blocks from Heather to Columbine, what we'll call the Crest Station, the Business District, the beautification project in there, will take place. That is still being designed by our Taylor Design Group. They're scheduled to appear before the planning board at some point here this summer. So the planning board is aware, the planning board was the one that chose the six blocks in which to create the business district, and they'll make their presentation any more at that particular time. And then we'll also probably ask them to come and make a public presentation at the governing body at the commissioners' meeting as well.
So Mayor, if I could add to that, so what'll happen is in similar nature to what happened on Pacific Avenue, with the exception of this is a streetscape. We're going to get in first, do our infrastructure work, and you're going to be left with trench paving on the roadway. Like the mayor said, we'll be replacing the water and sewer, and then we're going to be adding some water and sewer services to complement the eventual streetscape and some amenities that are going to come after that. So we're going to get in first, do the ugly work, trench the road, and then leave it and then hand it over to the county.
And I assume we'll address the rubble strip on the northbound side of New Jersey.
It's kind of grown up.
Oh, you don't like that?
Every time I drive, Kim says, get over on the other side of the road.
It's grown on me over the years. Yeah.
It's like the rickety bridge. Right, right.
Thank you.
Okay, that finishes up our engineers' report. We're going to move on to our CFO report.
Well, we'll be here all night.
Oh, good. Correspondents, unlisted, new business, unlisted. We've been doing the old business. 250th Birthday Committee reminding everyone, next year is our country's 250th birthday. If you're looking to help the borough plan some events and activities, please send an email to our clerk. Wildcast Municipal App is on hold. Historical Museum is also on hold. Concession Agreement, Hotel Zonin Beach Chairs, not sure where we are with that. That was on hold as we work our way through this Army Corps and the Dune Project, so that is considered to be still on hold. Traffic calming, there's been, there's been a contract awarded to, or soon to be awarded, to do some line striping on Park Boulevard, Atlantic Avenue, and Ocean Avenue. On that note, somebody asked a question, I think it might have been Mr. McWilliams, with respect to the Park Boulevard. To get, just to dive into that a little bit more, New Jersey, I'll call it the I-Bank Program. There's roughly $6 million available to the borough for a potential reconstruction of Park Boulevard. So that is where some additional traffic calming and also the roadway would get reconstructed as well. We were able to receive $3 million for this year, which Bayview Drive and some side streets are going to be done after the summer. So apologize in advance, but after the summer, the borough is going to be under construction for a lot of different projects. So you might be doing a lot of detouring, but short-term pain, long-term gain.
Can I address something for you?
Sure.
One second. So Park Boulevard is a concern of everyone's. The striping will be done once the construction material is gone. I spoke to Ralph Crassy, who does that. And the walkway signs will be placed where they were. So they're not up right now. They will be up shortly. Thank you.
Okay, Back Beach Estivation. We just awarded emergency contract to APS to do some necessary work. So that's going to address some blocks in the Back Beach, but also on the easterly side of the dunes where we have some low line bonding areas. So that work will be happening sometime next week. Judging anything?
We had a meeting earlier this month with subcommittee, and we're waiting to hear back from the DOT for the next phase of that project. So we're still waiting, but there is progress being made for that as of right now.
Okay. New Jersey Avenue, we just talked about that. That's the work that's going to be done on New Jersey Avenue after the summer. Washington Sea View Beach Falls End Capacity. We are, we received another positive note on some FEMA monies coming to the borough for some pump stations potentially on the west side and also on the east side. So the goal ultimately would be, the borough has six outfall lines. If you go to the beach, you see the outfall lines that take the water out to the beach. This project would consolidate those six lines into one big one with the use of a pump station. So when it rains, it kicks on, and the water goes out to the ocean. The Army Corps, the NJ DEP, so it's all quiet on the front right now. The borough has requested to meet with the NJ DEP, not as an individual municipality, but as with all the rest of the municipalities on the island. That's North Wildwood, that's Wildwood, and it's Wildwood Crest, though our township is taking a hands-off position. The DEP said, hey, we're not interested in meeting consolidated. We're interested in meeting one-on-one. Our argument is, is that, hey, if you're doing an island-wide project, we need to talk about it as an island as opposed to individual municipalities. They don't want any parts of that. I thought we had the Army Corps on board with having a meeting with all the municipalities. Received a notice yesterday that basically said, hey, yeah, we are interested, but the DEP is our partner, so we're no longer interested in meeting with Wildwood Crest and the rest of the community unless the DEP gives their blessing on it because they're partners in this. So it's news at 11. We're going to continue to request, you know, request meetings so we can talk through the details of the project. I mean, I think the biggest issue, if I can speak openly, is the sand barring and what it will do to the width of our beaches. The dunes, as we exist, we contend that we have dunes. If you drive up and down the Jersey coast, you're going to see that we have some of the biggest dunes on the oceanfront, right? And they're very large, and if we get a storm, moving the water closer to the beachfront makes no sense to us. And so we're going to continue to fight the fight. Earlier tonight, we passed a resolution. We do have an attorney that we had to increase some funding to, that if this turns south, we have to be prepared. We're going to have to spend some money to litigate this thing in hopes that it eventually goes away, or we at least get this project to a point where we're all comfortable. Not, I'm not just speaking to the governing body. I would say 99% of all of you are interested in keeping us, our beaches exactly the way that they are.
Yes.
So anyway, so that's an update on that.
Good question. Can I?
Not yet.
About that?
Do, do I'm not about this?
You can't.
Do, do I'm not about this. We're going through the commissioners, the old business right now. We're going through the Commissioners' old business right now. Borough Hall renovations, the public, I'm sorry, the next meeting, Francine Kreckman from Royal, we're anticipating awarding a contract for the renovations of this building and the police side of this building as well, for a free shore project in 2026 or sometime thereafter. All right. Now, we're ready for public. I'm going to come on up and...
Well, I wanted, I have only five minutes, asking about something like that. I just, I was going to ask if we're calling for a lawsuit against... Do they? Lisa Rippeau. Lisa Rippeau.
Okay.
First of all, I'm going to speak to Mr. Galzounas directly and ask him if he's always so abrupt and rude to taxpayers besides me. This gentleman made a comment, "Don't start my time, and I wanted to speak, and you cut me off." This gentleman asked a question after hours, what he, where he should call it. He was told, "Police." I said, "What number?", and you shut me down. Are you trying to harass me? Are you trying to intimidate me? The gentleman asked a question.
Ms. Rippeau, I believe it's the other way around, quite honestly.
Really?
Yeah. Any questions in connection with, or by proxy through other people, about 911 calls, or anything in any way related to criminal charges, or anything like that? We're not going to answer any of these questions.
I was arrested for calling 911 the other day.
Hold on.
Exactly. We're not answering any questions.
Exactly. That's why I'm making sure this gentleman doesn't get arrested. Thank you. I have five minutes.
Go ahead.
I spoke here two weeks ago about cyberbullying not being reported by my ex-friend, which is the police.
Mrs. Rippeau, I have to stop you there.
I have five minutes.
No, 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 no. Just so you know, I don't want you mentioning names, I don't want you getting accusatory, I don't want you...
Okay, here's what I'm going to do. I have five minutes.
I'll let you know, this is what you're allowed to say, okay? You're allowed to express opinion and concerns. You're allowed to share personal experiences and information. You're allowed to ask questions, reasonable questions. When, as Mr. Galzounas already spoke to, you are representing yourself, you provide...
I'm going to ask my questions. If you don't want to answer them, that's fine.
You can make suggestions. But what's not allowed are personal attacks and slanderous remarks.
My truth is my truth.
Okay. I just want to lay the groundwork. You may ask your, you may make your public comment.
No problem. I don't really care if there's defendants, witnesses, or whatever. My truth is my truth, and I have five minutes to speak, and I'm going to read, okay? I was arrested two days after I spoke out here in public about corruption. I was, it came to my house, they had not allowed me to make, to file criminal charges, and I was ripped out of my house two days after I spoke here in alleged corruption for calling 911. That's why I asked, for you, so you don't get arrested. I sent this email out earlier, I'm going to read it, I have five minutes. There's questions, you don't have to answer them. I don't, I don't really care. You've crossed the line. People have crossed the line. So, here's my letter. It went out to the Attorney General's Office and everywhere else. Dear Mr. Galzounas, Mayor Carrera, Mr. Schiff, and Mr. Franco, have you had a chance to review any of the body camera video from numerous officers, including Mr. Lloyd, Mr. D'Amico, Mr. Sawyer, Mr. Engel, for their cyberbullying I reported to Chief Lloyd? You don't have to answer. Have you had a chance to review the body camera for the date of March 26, 2024, over a year ago, when I busted into the police station and for which I just found out no police report was ever generated? You don't have to answer it. Did you know I was arrested on April 12, three days after I spoke up about corruption in public at the last Wildwood Crest Borough meeting? You don't have to answer it. Have you reviewed the body cams for my false arrest and false imprisonment, for which I ended up in the hospital? Have you listened to the recording of the shakedown call I got from Chief of Police Bob Lloyd on March 4, 2005, and what I screamed to him? Do you not have another pending lawsuit against him? Bob Lloyd, Richard D'Amico, Raymond Engel, and Officer Cobb, Foster versus Wildwood Crest? Do you know how many years of service it takes to get lifetime benefits and pensions from the PFRS? Who in their right mind would have thought sending someone to my house to arrest me and yank me out of my house would have been a good idea? You didn't put it on a summons even. I mean, you put it on a summons, you didn't even put it on a warrant, for God's sake. In all the light of all these facts and circumstances that you are well aware of, and more that you probably aren't, is this your position to continue to stand by these Wildwood Crest police officers and others yet mentioned, who clearly have violated not just moral and ethical boundaries, but have vindicate, vindictively targeted both me and my family? Do you know Sergeant Sheets and another set of officers from Wildwood Crest Police are now under an Internal Affairs investigation because of my false arrest? Do you know what I think? I think we should shut down the Wildwood Crest Police Department for some serious crimes, give a few people some desk jobs, and create a centralized, island-wide, public safety, 911, central communications, court, trash pickup, to include our island and all those who inhabit it, including Lower Township. Per diem being paid to us by Lower Township for emergency services while we pay Irma how many hundreds of thousands of dollars for our court services? Not only is this nonsense in today's world of shrinking municipal budgets, but it is lacking in sense, because Diamond Beach is where the money is. But more than that, it is about safety. People needing help and emergency services, including drownings, need to be sent to the correct places. Centralized county dispatch does not work here on the island, it is a known failure. There are too many municipalities, and those people out of the county do not know this island and where the intricate boundaries...
Mrs. Rippeau, that is five minutes. Thank you for your opinion.
You're welcome.
Anybody else call the comment?
I am Mike Moreno, and it sounded really good to hear some of the work that's being done on the streets. I know we threw Park out there a couple of times, so I see that the Wildwood side of Cressy, some work was done, lines were removed, and I'm thinking that there's work to be done on our side, probably some lane shrinkage, and I'm hoping that's going to be considered and put in place, because right now, the way that's open, used to be a left there coming south, and we always had that raceway. So, that raceway, the turn-in's gone, and we should probably funnel the traffic down to one lane and slow the traffic down, or we're still going to have the same problem. So, is that considered? Any of that considered? Well, I know you, we talked about Park, I heard Park mentioned a couple of times. So, is that part of the plan? Is there anything scheduled for Cressy?
So, all right, so for Park Boulevard, if the Borough files a New Jersey infrastructure bank project, the driver behind that would be the replacement of the sanitary sewer, that's how the Borough would get grant funding, as well as storm mitigation. As part of the replacing of the sewer, the program will pay for the reconstruction of the roadway, and that would include removing curbs, repaving, restriping, adding striping, and we would be evaluating to raise the road. So, if they proceed with a New Jersey I-Bank application, all those things come into play.
So, is that this year?
I'm looking at Francine.
I get all that, and it sounds like a great idea, but we do have a problem on the Cressy side, on the Crest side, where there's two lanes are left, and it wouldn't take much to stripe it down and just get the traffic seen. The road is shrinking, you have one lane going into the press, it would make things a lot better and safer.
So, that's a striping issue, not a full-blown...
I wasn't expecting a full-blown...
So, how do we do this? Could you address it with Ralph and Chief?
Well, one of the problems is, to have what we had done, actually, wasn't going to mention a lot of it, Wildwood, in conjunction with our chief and myself, talked about different issues with the Chief of Police. One of them was that situation right there, because I think we'd all believe that those things were happening, specifically people pulling forward and trying to run in front of somebody else. So, right now, that end of where the arrows were, that's not us, although we will speak to it, because that's really Wildwood. Once past Wildwood into Cressy, yes, that's us.
Okay, and that's what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I understand. So, we're looking at it.
Okay. So, you're looking at the Crest side. Is there any thought about doing it this year? It's a simple striking?
Yes.
It will go away when the big plank gets put into place?
We'll see how... We'll see how that goes.
Okay. I know you like to...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, what's my answer? You're going to look into it? Because you've told me you're going to look into it a lot of times.
No, I'll tell you what.
You don't look.
We'll take your stuff under, your questions under consideration. Thank you.
No answer. Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment?
David Williams, just a follow-up question on the Back Bay work, the Back Beach work. Four, three or four years ago, we did a big project, did all of the, all the roads, I think, from Nashville south, because they had a whole bunch of ponding, they had to bring in the pumps, portable pumps. For $10,000, we're not coming anywhere close to doing that, I'm assuming. What specifically is the scope of the Back Bay project?
What's the scope? You want me to handle that one?
Sure.
So, the scope of what was authorized tonight is the question?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, the scope is, in that three-block area, the contractor, so the Borough has a permit from the DEP to go out to a certain area in front of the dunes, we call it the blanket space, and they're allowed to take up to 12 inches of sand in a certain area and use it to level the beach. So, this contractor's going to go into that three-block area in front of the dunes, he's going to take the 12 inches of sand, and he's going to deposit back in this back area. The back area right now, if you were to look at, if I was to draw up my finger, you have the bulkhead, and then you have the dune. There's a belly in it, it holds water, there's green slime and algae growing, etc., in that area. So, the permit that the Borough has allows them to fill that back area up to elevation eight. This project, we're going to fill it up to elevation seven, because we have to marry into walkways, etc. So, it basically is a filling of a, of a low area that is exhibiting green stripes. It's the area bounded by Farragut and one block in either direction.
Farragut, Stanton, and Stockton?
No, Farragut, Stanton, Stockton, we all go in north, but that's okay. But it's just that three blocks.
Well, it's those three blocks, and there's some areas that have yet to be identified by the Beach Patrol and Recreation, where they place the beach boxes and so forth. There's some really, sometimes you're accessing the beach box, and you're standing in knee-deep water to do that, so they're going to move out there. Is there...
That's on the beach side, that's on the ocean side of the dunes. I'm thinking that this project addresses something between the bulkheads and the dunes.
And for this project that was authorized, yes, for a three-block area.
Okay. So, we don't think there's any problem other than from Farragut to Stockton?
Yeah, the answer is, there's a lot of, a lot of problems on there, but what we've done is that prioritize areas that we know are what we'll call the worst, where in their visual observation and drive-through with public works, they solve some areas that need some concern. That's what was authorized tonight. However, there are some additional areas that have yet to be identified that is continual, so there's not just going to be those three blocks, there's going to be some additional ones, once we have a chance to finish up with the Beach Patrol and Recreation can weigh in as to what street, and they also need to have as well.
So, then you've got to go back to the state, the DEP, to get permission to move sand again?
No, we have a permit to do that already.
Enough to do all the blocks between Nashville and Pittsburgh? Because I walk that every day. And I'm telling you, I've stopped walking in the Back Beach area, because it's a mess, and it's not a mess just those three blocks.
So, the answer to your question is, can there be other streets added? The answer is yes, that comes with a cost. That's what we need to work on.
But we do, we do have a permit for the entirety of the beach, and if I could also add, what's going to happen in this three-block area is, we're working with the Borough's environmental consultant to install some beach sand fencing, so that once this work is undertaken, that that fencing's going to go up in a strategic location to try to retain that sand there, so that we don't have to keep doing this.
So, you can retain the sand in these three blocks, so none of it can go north and south?
Well, once it's deposited, we want it to stay there, so if the Boroughs...
I agree, I understand that, but are you going to, does that mean that I'm going to have access issues trying to walk up and down that? And if you're going to put fences to keep the sand in, am I going to be able to walk that area?
Yes, you will.
I'm struggling to see how you're going to keep the sand in, but I'll see what comes up.
Yeah, public access will not...
Right now, we think we have the permits, they have enough sand to do it all.
No, we do have the permits.
Yeah, the permits do the stand-up at all, but you just funded three blocks out of eight or 10.
Right, and the other ones are, we'll just have to get the three worst done, and then we'll get other change orders done if necessary to do other streets, including on the blanket beach that Mr. DeBosser's picked up.
Okay, I'm assuming these three blocks are going to be done before Memorial Day?
Yes.
Yeah, we don't have time to do the entire beach in order to, we have the appropriate funding available to do all that.
So, when do we talk about other blocks that are going to get done?
Do you have a specific request? I guess you do.
Well, I'm going to tell you, from Nashville down to St. Paul, it is a mess. Every morning.
So, how, so he'll get a quote from the contractor to see what that costs?
And Farragut, Stockton, and Stanton are well worth it.
Understood.
Because I'm afraid now you're not trusting anything south of that land, so, okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Public comment?
I'm still working on that.
Me, too.
Anybody on the conference line have any public comment? Okay, hearing none, we're going to have a motion for a closed session.
We have a Commissioner...
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I'm asking.
I'm good.
I'm good for this.
Okay, I have something to add to Commissioner's comments. I'd like to address the allegations made against the Chief of Police and members of the Wildwood Crest Police Department. While I will not get into specifics, I cannot allow some of the public comments to go unanswered. I have full confidence in our chief and the members of our police department, and my understanding of this matter is that a proper investigation was conducted and reviewed by both the Wildwood Crest Police Department and the Cape May County Prosecutor's Office. I understand that there may be times when someone does not agree with the outcome of an allegation, and there are proper ways to address these concerns. However, the allegations levied against the chief and the police department are, in my opinion, baseless and without merit. I would, I would never allow anything to undermine the integrity of public safety, and I want the public to know that they are served by some of the finest officers in the state of New Jersey, who are led by an exceptional command staff and Chief of Police. I have full faith in the Wildwood Crest Police Department, and I know that they have and will continue to operate with professionalism and integrity for this Borough, its residents, and its visitors. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm going to read that resolution now.
Sure.
Authorizing executive closed in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, specifically NJSA 10:4-12B, with regard to two items, employment summer hours and